I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is Independent School District number 832. This is our regular meeting of the Board of Education on Wednesday, November 10th at 7:11 PM. We've already had our comments to the board. We've been called to order. Nexus roll call of attendance. Thank you, Julie. And then now we have the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Moved by Tony, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julie, second by Kevin. Any discussion on the consent agenda? I'd just like to highlight that the board calendar for our meetings for the year 2022 is included in that agenda, in that consent agenda. So you'll want to print that out and have those on your calendar. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have presentations and recognition. We have connections and wellness update. Tony Pierce.
Okay, I think I got everything. Yep. Good evening, board. I'm here to give an update on the connections and wellness that we're currently seeing in our schools and some of the things that we're doing across, across the district. Just make sure I control in this correctly. All right. So tonight, we're going to talk about some connections and relationship building activities that are happening in each building, some wellness activities that are happening in each building, what we're doing to assess and screen for mental health needs, where we're at with our co-located mental health provider who is North Homes, and next steps in moving forward. It's not going for somebody's. Forward. There we go. All right. So during the 2021 school year, educators, students, and families experienced significant and profound changes in teaching and learning as well as social and emotional wellbeing. It's important to keep this in mind as we move forward with our support structures in our schools. We need to be aware and responsive to the impact that COVID-19 pandemic has had on our students. We're using support tools we used in the past, but we're also responding in real time to the needs that are surfacing this school year in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's vital that we continue to be dynamic in our responses to students as we move forward. So what you see here is a research-based model that we use to illustrate the importance in the foundational aspects of getting to the higher levels of where we want our students to be. So this is something that you will see throughout this presentation where each, each building principal and myself are going to talk what we see universally for all students in those foundational areas, as well as what we see and how we address individual student needs. So if you look at this, you know, when I see this, it seems like it really makes sense that when you see it all laid out like that, 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 that foundation is just critical to getting to where we need to go, where we want our students to go. So just within that same thought, it's also critical that we make sure that we are giving attention and focus to strengthening that foundation. And we also know that foundation has been challenged this last year and beyond. So now I'm going to have each principal join me up here and talk about what is going on in their buildings.
Right. Thanks, Tony. I'm Scott Brisky, Principal of Wildwood Elementary. And some of the things that we've done to build connections and relationships is the Stagered Open House and the assessment days were just, were really, were really great. It allowed us to have a little bit of a slower start, and our teachers were able to connect a little bit more, have a little bit more time connecting with parents and vice versa. Also, I talked to our nurse, and she said that it was really nice to be able to have the time to talk about some of those health needs that students had. So that time was great, just to have it a little bit slower instead of that big flux of parents and, and students as excited as they are rushing in. It was nice to slow it down a little bit and stagger that this year. The assessment days gave us a little bit more of a clearer picture academically and socially of what our class, what our, what our classrooms look like for our teachers, and so that we could hit the ground running with instruction right away. We do responsive classroom the first six weeks of school. That's where we really want to build our culture up and our, in our classroom culture. So we talk about how to listen to each other. We talk about what it means to be a friend. We model everything and anything in the classroom so that all the students feel very comfortable, you know, being independent in their classroom and, you know, it kind of, it's kind of that home away from home. And so we take six weeks and we really lay that foundation for that academic success. We did kindergarten, school-wide tours, welcomed our new, our newest families coming in and, and gave them a tour and answered questions and tried to make sure that that was a real, a personal experience for them. I went into each classroom and I did a read aloud. A lot of kids at the K2 building don't know what the principal, who, what does that guy do that sits in the office all day? So I want to get out. I want them to know who I am. I want them to know what my role is. We did a welcome hands activity. So for families that are coming for conferences here the next couple of weeks, you'll see that we have a bunch of hands in our entryway. We talked about what it means to be welcoming, what it means to be a welcoming person. And then we talked about that. And then the kids actually wrote on their hands how they can welcome others. And so you'll see that in our entryway. We do a greeting every day. We have a, you know, every day has a different saying. So we have marvelous Mondays, terrific Tuesdays. It's wonderful Wednesday today. Thumbs up Thursday, fantastic Friday. And then our morning meeting is where we do greetings and we do sharing and students get to share about their lives. And they learn about each other. And it's kind of like a, it's like a little business meeting. It's really cute if you haven't seen it. And they, and they get to share about things that they're, you know, they're excited about. A lot of different things are happening in individual classrooms. We have soaring students of the week. We have letters from home. We have themed days such as Build a Fort Day, Donut Day, my personal favorite, and then Stuffed Animal Day.
Thank you. I'm Suzie Prather, the Principal of OH Anderson. And you'll see a lot of the same connection and relationship buildings at OH Anderson. Scott and I work together to really have some of those same connections. So as Scott spoke about, really that open house as a chance for families to connect with teachers and kids to connect with classes was an important piece. But with that added assessment days, it really provided students with that one-on-one attention with their teacher, and teachers got to know students as individuals. Our PTO parents really spoke about that that really helped kind of set the stage. So kids were eased, you know, eased into school and felt comfortable coming. There wasn't as much anxiety with that as well. As Scott said, we do responsive classroom, really, the first six weeks is orientating ourselves to the school and practicing things, teaching school-wide expectations. And of course, our morning meetings are one of the most important ways that we build that connection as a classroom community in each classroom. Again, the read-alouds are important at elementary school. So my SEL specialist counselor and myself are doing read-alouds in classrooms to really connect with individual classrooms. At OH Anderson, we have morning news that happens each day. And this year, the kids are the producers of the news. So they're adding their own spotlights, staff spotlight, student spotlights, and things like that. And then they're also sharing that each day. So class gets a week that they're in charge of the news, and we're on the smart board using Google Meet and things like that to really bring that connection as a school community. We have school-wide celebrations that are happening. We have a monthly ticket bowl challenge where kids earn tickets when they're doing the right thing, and we thank kids for doing the right thing. So tomorrow is drive-in movie during lunch tomorrow, so because we filled the ticket bucket. So that's a fun piece. And then on the bottom is our school theme for this year, and it's Be Somebody to Someone. And if you ever, if you want to Google that, and look, it's a song by The Banners, and it really talks about how are we that important person for our peers, how are teachers being somebody for all of our kids so that we can really build those connections at OH Anderson? Scott and I, our wellness activities are going to look very similar. So we're going to just kind of share with that. Both schools do second step weekly SEL lessons in each classroom, kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yep. And we take lots of daily recess breaks outside. The weather's been amazing. So we've been going outside and making sure that they're connecting together. I've actually heard from a lot of teachers that they really, they really like that their classroom is together outside. That actually is building a stronger bond inside their classroom instead of kind of going out for recess and being with, you know, six or seven other classes. They're actually finding that with just their class, they're actually becoming closer because they're learning to not just do the inside classroom activities, but they're also learning how to play and, and, you know, have some fun outside too.
And I want to give a shout out to our PTO who does the fun run at both schools. And it was a fun way to show our love for hanging out together, but also doing wellness activities. And they tested my fitness with that potato sack race. And I know Mr. Busini saw my target skills were a little weak, but it was a fun time for our kids to really exercise and, and build that community.
Yeah. And we have break bins, and we do lots of brain breaks such as Gold Noodle, which is a dancing platform on YouTube, and the breathing ball. And we just, we want to make sure that our students aren't literally sitting all day, that they're up and they're moving and they're, and they're getting the wiggles out and all that. So.
And definitely in our Hyatt classes, a lot of wellness and movement's happening. So in those classrooms, you can see all the kids moving and having a good time, being healthy as well.
Yeah. And then our, our behavior interventionists, actually, we, we do a survey with, with the teachers, and they actually can pinpoint some of the things that need to work on as far as social skills. So he pulls three or four students at a time and works on those small groups with, for social skills, which is really beneficial. Yeah. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Miller, Principal at the middle school. So at the middle school, high school, Justin and I will kind of bounce and tag team very similar in, in what OH and you see at Wildwood as well. One of the things I feel like that really makes the middle school a special place and helps, as I said on the screen here, to make a, a large school really feel small is our interdisciplinary teams where at each grade level, in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade, that students are tied to those, to those two unique teams. And the fact that the, the teachers, you know, sharing those students, being able to collaborate, they meet weekly in something we call Student Focus, which is really a chance for teachers to talk about kids, to talk about the things that they're seeing, strategies for intervention, or ways that they can support and make the, make their team really a community for the, for the students that they work with. We're also really fortunate. We have three school counselors who loop with their students from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, which also again helps build those strong connections, relationships, not just only with the students and with the teachers, supporting those students, but also the relationships that they build with families and with parents. We also spent a lot of time at the beginning of the year, you know, onboarding looks a little bit different at the middle school, but some of the team building exercise and activities that we do through our Zephyr time or advisory and through our teams to again, build those relationships, build that community amongst our teams. Each counselor meets with every single one of their students. They, they call these minute meetings. They're actually not actually a minute. They're longer than that, but they, they call them minute meetings, which are really the kind of a quick way for them to sort of begin building those connections with all of their students, especially important for our sixth graders as they enter into the middle school. Principal chats are something that we do periodically where again, it's a chance, just like as Scott and Mr. Brisky was sharing around at Wildwood, it's important for students to know who I am and our associate principal, Ms. Collins, as well. And, and our expectations and the kinds of things that we sort of want to see our students be doing and the expectations we have for them and sort of our dreams for them at the middle school as well, and also helps keep us all on the same page, not only as our, for our staff, but also for our students and kind of where we're going. As a middle school student, something that we're really trying to strive for this year is continuing to expand also just clubs and activities and offerings that we can do for kids, not just outside of school, but also ways that we can find to embed those within the school day. Just most recently, we started a monthly design challenge, which is just a fun way for kids that are interested in engineering or STEM to be able to solve solutions to, or find solutions, excuse me, to some fun problems that we can do at school. And again, just another way to engage kids in areas that they're passionate about or that they're really interested in. And something that we're also really, really excited about is web, where everyone belongs. Many, many middle schools, especially the middle schools that I've had been fortunate enough to be a part of in my career, have conducted what's called a web program. It's very similar. You'll see for the high school where they have Link Crew. They're part of the same, sort of a part of the same program, part of the same organization. And web is an onboarding process for our students coming into us as sixth graders. And the process begins early on in the school year when we begin to identify in eighth grade who our leaders, our web leaders will be. And we're identifying who those eighth grade mentors will be for our incoming sixth grade students. And then before school starts, there's a web day, again, very similar to what happens with Link, but then also throughout the year, be able to maintain those relationships between our eighth grade mentors and our sixth grade students. And the ways that we'll be able to embed that, we have some ideas that we're really kind of kicking around with Zephyr time and how we can kind of continue to sort of team between our, our different students across the building. So something I think is really going to foster a great community at the middle school for years to come.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Justin Hahn, the principal at the high school. Jason spoke a lot about some of the things that we share in common with the middle school. So I'll just try and put a little bit of a high school spin on, on some of these. At the start of the year, we thought it was really important to establish those relationships and for students that had limited time, especially our ninth and 10th graders in the building previous to this year, to sit down and have conversations with them about very similar to the middle school with expectations and just to get to know us and talk about those things that we really want to see from those different age groups and grade levels of students. And so we did that at the beginning of the year. Our focus for this year is really in line with the strategic plan. And really, one of the foundational beliefs that I have before any meaningful learning can happen is about really building those relationships and being intentional about that. And so that was, that's been a focus in each of the classrooms that we have. And from the teacher perspective, because they're that nexus, that most close connection to our students. And we see a lot of good things coming in, out of that with our things like flex time that we'll talk about a little bit later too. We started the year in advisory, and that's really that we assign basically 25 students to each staff member and really to use that for team building and for students to take a break or to work on things on class. Now, we have switched that during the third week of school to flex time. And like I said, you're going to get to see a video a little bit later on that will highlight some of the pieces of that. But really, flex time for our students has been a, a piece of student voice. We've got with Aaron Forsythe, our Activities Director, he's been a real big advocate for students to be able to participate in many different activities. And really what he says, as long as there's an advisor or another staff member that can help out with the students, we're willing to do that. Like, you know, two weeks ago, I was in one of the flex time classes, and it was a cheese competition. So students were bringing in cheese and just a way to just relax and take that 25 minutes of time. There's all different, you know, things happening. There's an investment club that just started too within the last couple of weeks. So there's a lot of really neat things that are happening with that. And that flex time piece, the only really, you know, criteria that we put on is that teachers have to allow one day out of the week that is for their students. So if you're teaching math, you have your math kids, you give one dedicated day so that you can provide that academic support. But really, it's students that feel very comfortable with our staff members are able to go into their classrooms and spend that time. A lot of it is downtime, but also there's a lot of variety of things that are happening too for our kids. And so when we look at our Fab Lab with engineering or robotics, they're able to get that additional support. Same thing in all of our, our different areas. So it's really a neat time, and it continues to evolve each week as well. And then as we look down to a variety of groups for students are run by our counseling staff and social worker. And so one of the things too, we have Kale Bacon, who's our social worker. He is running in partnership with one of our social studies teachers, a stress management. Basically, it's for organizational skills and for also just how to manage stress and the things that students would see in daily life. So it's been really neat. I was able to sit in one of those sessions earlier this year. And then during that flex time as well, we've set up a schedule for our different activities and clubs to meet so that if a student's involved in multiple clubs or activities, that they don't all align on the same days so that they can be able, you know, be able to meet with the, they have the ability to meet with different groups. And then very similar to what web is at the middle school level is Link Crew. And so this starts in the spring, actually, by identifying juniors and seniors who represent our students, become our Link Crew leaders, and then they lead an orientation in August for our ninth, our incoming ninth grade students. And then each month, they meet with ninth graders to make those connections with them and continue to make those connections throughout the course of the year and then do different activities with them as well. All right. So we, so Jason and I can split this up a little bit. And I can talk a little bit, I've talked a lot about flex time. And what we did that's different than in the past is we have built it into each day. So there's a 25-minute period that's dedicated to that each day, Monday through Friday. And again, as you look at that, teachers provide a variety of activities that rotate daily. So each Sunday, a Google form would go out and teachers can put down what their weekly schedule is so that, and we post it in the comments area, and students can see a line with whatever their passions might be or whatever thing, you know, whatever they need to work on for that day. They can see what teacher's facilitating what activity at that time, and then they can choose where it is that they want to go for that 25-minute period. But some of the different things that we see too, outdoor walks with teachers, which again, you know, you think about those connections and also the wellness component of this and coming off of COVID, those things are super important. And then we have musical rehearsals that are happening, career exploration, a lot of different varieties of open art studios, and then also electronics lab. I spoke about this one earlier too. Mr. Bacon and Mr. Murtha, meeting with students during that flex time for a stress and time management class. Counselors have a variety of support groups that rotate based on student need. They are also facilitating a friends lunch group during that, during our lunch period. And then also the many course offerings we have in physical education and health as well.
Yeah, thank you. The, you know, at the middle school, two things I really want to highlight are, you know, really actually thinking about those first two bullets. During Zephyr time, we have one day during the middle of the week, we call it Wellness Wednesday, where our counselors lead and facilitate sort of wellness lessons. We, very similar to what you see at, at, at OH as well, around using the second step resources to be able to help facilitate that along with things that they're creating on their own. Some of it again is around just mindfulness or building connections with each other. How, how do we interact with each other in ways that build a positive community and taking care of ourselves? Our counselors also, we'll talk more about this in just a, in a bit, when we talk about some of the ways that we identify ways to support kids, is our counselors also really work with targeted groups of students around academics or social, emotional needs and skills that they create different groups using Zephyr time to be able to support the students. Sometimes it's over lunch. You know, Ms. Hashig, our sixth grade counselor, one's a sixth grade sort of lunch group that she works with each week with kids. That's just sort of those that are interested in joining is just kind of a different space to, to have lunch and to connect with kids and just kind of a different space than being in the lunchroom or, or in that area. And so using those different kind of spots and talented staff that we have to be able to support kids. We're also fortunate. We also have our behavior specialist in the building who works really closely with students. Sometimes students can find that just whether it's at school or just in other spaces that they might be struggling for different reasons. And having somebody who can really, you know, be an advocate for those students and really provide some coaching, some support, some, some, you know, just instructional practice support around what areas for those students to grow and improve, especially in the areas that they're really having a hard time in.
So we just made a short video so you can see what a morning meeting looks like. And this is in Mrs. Dwarik's class, but it's the same thing that happens in all classes, both at Wildwood and OH Anderson.
Hello, I'm Suzie Prather, the Principal of OH Anderson Elementary School. I'm going to share with you how a morning meeting is connected to our strategic plan. At OH Anderson, we have created a strategic plan that focuses on a lot of areas. One of the pieces that a morning meeting really hits on is how do we create an inclusive and fun environment that honors the worth of the individual and connections with others? A morning meeting does just that. It also, we want to create a culture that empowers authentic student choice, voice, and action. A morning meeting is an excellent opportunity to elevate students' voice. There are a lot of values to morning meetings, and morning meetings happen every day at OH Anderson and at Wildwood. It's an awesome way to start the day for our students. It builds a strong sense of community within the classroom. It values every individual's voice. It helps students practice listening and speaking standards. And it sets up students for success both academically and socially. With this morning meeting and that comfortable, safe environment that it creates, it helps students to be able to take risks in their learning and have support around them by their peers and the adults there as well. At OH Anderson, our morning meeting is a little bit different. It promotes an opportunity for students to discuss issues and listen to other perspectives in a respective, in a respectful way. I believe one of the benefits of a morning meeting is for students to be able to speak and listen to each other and respect everyone's perspective. It also will help students to be able to share their perspectives in the future as they move on to middle school and high school. We are excited for you to see what a morning meeting looks like in one of our classrooms at OH Anderson and share what students experience every day during a morning meeting.
What multiplication strategy are you thinking is a good fit for you personally right now? Is it the songs? Is it skip counting? Is it fingers? Is it a different strategy you have? So take a minute and think, then share. Go ahead. And when your group has finished, just go ahead and raise a hand. Good morning. I am so happy you are here today. Be thinking about where you want to. Oregon. Massachusetts or. Let's make. And do we have power to make a different day? Even if we have some mistakes? Even if things don't go smoothly? We'll help each other out, right?
There we go. All right. So this is the, what I've been talking about with flex time. And I have to thank Alice Suyper for stopping in last week to, to be able to highlight and showcase what some of our students get to experience here. So.
Hello, everyone. I'm Justin Hahn, Principal at Mottamidi High School. Today, I have the opportunity to share a snapshot of what flex time looks like during our school day. A few pieces of our high school strategic plan really stand out with the use of this time in our daily schedule. The first one is really about students being able to follow their passions and immerse themselves in a variety of experiences. Another major component is creating inclusive and safe environments where students are supported socially, emotionally, and academically. And that brings us to the why behind flex time. We have five main categories for our flex time offerings. The first is academic support. The second one is exploring and discovering passions. We also have a fitness component, social, emotional support, and relationships and connections. The neat thing is that students are advocating for different clubs with our teachers because of the relationships that they have created. This will continue to evolve, and we are excited for you to see what flex time looks like at Mottamidi High School.
So we're going to speak about our mental health screenings that we have at each of the buildings. So I'll let Scott start with Wildwood.
Yeah, thanks. So we have Sabers three times a year, and that was that screening that I was talking about earlier where it identifies some strengths and wastes that we can, that we can help our students work on those social emotional needs. And then I did talk about the social emotional groups, which are pulled between three and four students, where Joe Pendleton does a really good job of working on like how to resolve conflict between students, what to do if they get angry, what to do if something doesn't go their way, what to do if somebody cuts in front of you in lunch line, you know, things like that. So we have individual student meetings with our North Homes worker, and she works independently with students on all sorts of social emotional skills, so.
And at OH Anderson, students actually do their My Sabers independently. So it's an assessment to see how connected they are to friends, how they're able to solve problems. And they do that two to three times a year. Our counselors also do the minute meetings, like you heard about at the middle school, where they spend some time, our counselors and SEL specialists with individuals, just to make sure that they have adults that they can connect with, that they're making friends, and kind of determining if there are specific needs kids might have as well. We also have discussions at Data Days, so we have regular Data Days when we're looking at reading and math data. But we're also looking at student needs for social emotional needs, organizational needs, other supports that they have, and there are win groups that are taught by both our SEL specialist and by our counselor for those groups as well.
And I think going back to one of the earlier slides that Tony had shared with the grid and kind of showing how those building blocks, those are those foundational pieces. Because we know that when students, you know, that we always go back to that sense of students really having a sense of belonging and connectedness with school. And if they're, if they're feeling that connection and that comfort, that's going to allow them to be more successful academically. So addressing and kind of finding what those underlying maybe needs might be and how we can address those are really, really important. At the middle school, our counseling team administers a, we call it just a fall needs assessment that the elementaries, they use My Sabers. At the middle school, we use a tool that's been just developed by our counselors. And the purpose behind that is to really help them identify, again, how students are doing, what they're feeling. And it's useful information for our counselors to be able to analyze and then identify what kinds of support groups do they maybe need to have. We have students that will share that they really feel disorganized, and they really want to be able to have a space where they can have somebody help them with how they stay organized during the day and what to do. And so our counselors can take that information and create a group that they can work with students, maybe over Zephyr time or during, or maybe have like a lunch bunch or something that they might work with where they can identify that or address that particular need. And again, build those strong connections with all of our, all of our students in the various needs that kind of get represented. Seventh grade also, our students take health in seventh grade, they take it in sixth grade as well. But in seventh grade health, there's a mental health co-type unit with our grade level counselor. That's been something in place for quite some time. That is, again, a great way for our counselors to build that connection to the classroom as well and to support students in that setting. And then our counseling team as well, along with myself and our building nurse, as well as our behavior specialist and our associate principal, Ms. Collins, we meet weekly. And part of that conversation that we meet with about is really around updates regarding students and student needs, especially around areas where there's health concerns.
Many of our students at the high school, as ninth and 10th graders, will take a health class. And it is in that health class where we see our most, one of our most comprehensive pieces with a mental health screener that is conducted by our counseling staff. And so there's a process that, based on the scoring and the evaluation of that screener, then the counseling staff follows up with parents and with the student as well, depending upon what need that student has. They also conduct a lot of individual meetings and check-ins. When I think about an MTSS system, which is a multi-tiered systems of support, and you look at those three pieces at this, on the second part, the academic behavior and attendance. So if a student is flagging on one of those levels, that enacts a response from us too. And as Tony was just, or sorry, as Jason was just talking about at the middle school, that they meet and they have discussions with the counseling staff on those specific types of things. We do the same thing at the high school each week. And, and that helps bring the support that we need. And we talk about problem solving and what solutions we have for those students. And some of the times, it's meeting with our social worker and getting some different skill building or specific to that student, types of skill building. And then there's also different groups with our counseling staff. And again, that's really based on needs of students and what they're seeing from those conversations that they have with their grade level groups of students. We also have check-ins with new students. And so when a student's coming new to our building from another district, we make sure that our counseling staff gives the tour and also connects them with other students. We've had some really neat things with even our security person this year, who is there at lunches, and he also coaches softball. One of the neat things that he's done is just taking a softball students and any of the new students that are sitting by themselves in the lunchroom, he will ask if the softball girls will go and sit with them. And we've had that have been pretty successful too with that. So just some different ways that we help with a variety of connections and helping students in that way, so.
All right. So I'm just going to talk briefly about North Homes. North Homes is our co-located mental health service. That means they are an outside agency. They are not funded through the school district, but they do work hand in hand with us in each of our four buildings. I want to just draw attention to, you can see on the left, the number of people that are currently, the students currently receiving services through North Homes. And we've been working with North Homes now, we are going on year three with North Homes. And prior to North Homes providing these mental health services, so what you see those numbers, that's approximately, it's a little over 100 students that are receiving services. And that number is important because prior to North Homes, we had approximately 20 students receiving services in our school district. We only had a mental health provider available at the high school, and that was about two and a half days a week. So we currently have three people spread out over four buildings, serving approximately 100 students. And for those of you who have heard me talk about this before, I really think that number is a need that's always existed. It isn't new business that's been drummed up. I think we are able to meet the needs that exist with our students. And that number, that 100-ish number has been consistent since they started. So for the last three years, at any given time, they consistently have about 100 students. The, the goal or the intent of receiving those services is not to be on there indefinitely. So some students might have been receiving those services all of these three years. Some of them may be received it for six months. So that's a, it's a constant changing of those services. But it's really just cool to see that we have the ability to meet the needs of those students in our schools directly during the school day. So there's just some information there on who the people are. Lindsay Lehman, Jen Jarman, Mary Stager. And anybody who is interested in receiving services can reach out to Lindsay Lehman directly, or the easiest way is always to contact your student's counselor, and they will make sure that you are connected. One other piece I wanted to highlight is, one of the things that is really cool that North Homes has received grant funding, as well as our school district has utilized grant funding through MAF and the Moda Mida Area Educational Foundation and White Bear Lake Area Foundation. And we have received grant to remove any financial barriers to people receiving these services. So anyone who has ever qualified or sought these services is able to receive them. So moving forward, last slide. So our, we have a district mental wellness committee that has been formed. This committee is made up of approximately 12 people, represented from early childhood all the way up to passages, where the main focus is how do we move to implement the action plans located in strategy number two of the district strategic plan? We will ensure the social and emotional wellbeing of students with an emphasis on mental wellness. So this group is meeting monthly and really coming in and saying, trying to be responsive to the needs that they are seeing in their respective areas, and then how we can collectively look to implement things in those buildings. So the main areas of focus, secondary mental health screening. You just heard how each building is doing something to screen for mental health. We would like to, we are currently exploring a way to make sure that we have a, and a universal screener that would go out to every single secondary student. We want to make sure that we don't inadvertently miss anybody. And something quick, something accessible, something usable that we could do two to three times a year. So this group is exploring that. Staff wellness, the, you know, we are, we are one community, and the wellness of our staff is important to providing strong supports to our students. So that, that work is also being supported by the Moda Mida Staff Wellness Committee. And they have already put forth some monthly activities to really just focus on joy and fun and making sure, and community building. And then finally, the Zephyr Wellness Program remains, that was, the Zephyr Wellness Program was a result of the May Fund a Need approximately four years ago. And I really think, you know, when we look at the Zephyr Wellness Program, we have, we've done community engagement, we've done student engagement, we've done collaboration with North Homes. But to me, the most significant piece of the Zephyr Wellness Program is that we talk about mental health and mental wellness. Four years ago, when we were talking about it, there was a little, you know, it was, it almost was, do we, can we talk about this at a regular basis? And, you know, can we, is this something that, you know, is the stigma around talking about it? And I, every time we go anywhere, especially after this last year and a half, we're always talking about mental wellness. And I think that that's a good indication that this program is working and we're moving in the right direction. So that concludes this presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from board members or comments? It's a great presentation.
And just first of all, thank you guys so much for that presentation and, you know, highlighting the things that you guys are doing for us at school. Um, but I think it was really important how you guys highlighted that we do have to have a foundation before we are able to, you know, achieve higher in our academics and in our wellness, and that foundation of self, stress management and self-regulation is incredibly important. Um, and kind of just talking about, you know, as students, we're trying to readjust to this crazy year that we've been in for like the last two years, and that does cause a lot of stress on students. I feel like a lot of students I'm talking to are always like, when I ask, how are you doing stressed? What do you want to do when you get home? Take a nap? So it's just a lot of very fast pace compared to last year. And I think one way that we are able to combat this, as Mr. Han highlighted, was Flex Time, and just really emphasizing that break time and hopefully growing and expanding on that Flex Time. Because students really do need that break. I think it was mentioned at OH, at OHA and at Wildwood, they don't just sit around all day. You know, they do activities. I think that's the same for high schoolers and for middle schoolers. Can't just sit at our classrooms all day and just expect to retain the information without getting tired. I don't know if go needle necessarily be what we do. I think that it's just important that we are incorporating those breaks for our students. In my psych class that I'm taking, like my psychology, and we feel we had a conversation about schools and just like how we can make them better. And overwhelmingly, I think the consensus of the group was we need more breaks or we need more time to just like decompress and just kind of put it down. And I know like my perspective may be a little tainted because I am taking a rigorous course load. It is expected that like I'm getting a lot of stuff. But from just hearing it from teachers and just students, I think that emphasis on breaks and just kind of decompressing is necessary. And that, I guess my final point is also just like hearing it from a few teachers are like, yeah, well, we really need to kind of get back to where we were from last year. And I'm just thinking, is really like pushing the content the way we're going to get back to where we were? Because we are now, like I said, we're trying to readjust. So not necessarily like pushing the content to make it go faster so that we can get back to where we were. Or maybe it's slowing down so that we can catch up, that will allow us to kind of get back to where we were. So I kind of just wanted to talk from the student perspective on, you know, that presentation. And I know that we're going to get there. It just, it's going to take a little bit of slowing down maybe before we can finally reach that point, so.
So just to your point, and me, I wish we'd asked this in the survey. Do you think, what, first of all, what time of day is the Flex Time scheduled? And second, do you think a second one in the day is needed?
The timing as of right now is between second and third hour. So like in the morning time, I don't know, I think that maybe it'd be, it'd be nice. Maybe it'd be necessary, but with the schedule that we have right now, I don't think that'd be possible. And I don't necessarily know if that's because of like the classes, like how it's organized. Because I know like in my freshman year, we had 48 minutes for Flex Time instead of 25. But because we have free lunches this year because of like COVID protocols, I understand that it had to be cut in half. But it might just be having a second Flex Time, but it also might just be having five minutes in your classes where you're just not necessarily pushing content on. It doesn't, I don't know if it necessarily has to be at another time, but just understanding that that pace maybe has to slow down at the beginning of classes or end of classes.
Thanks totally for sharing that. I don't think we could ask for anything better than the student perspective here. So thanks for sharing. A couple of things, I was really impressed with all four schools, all the things that they're doing to build relationships with students. And I'll tell you, just personally, last week when I was attending conferences at the high school, I was walking down the hallway and a number of the posters for the different activities that are happening during Flex Time caught my eye. Actually, Scott stopped in my tracks because I saw a Spike Ball Club was happening during Flex Time. And I thought my son, who just graduated, would have thought that was the coolest thing ever. And so I think, you know, like you said, if we're going to really dig deep into academics and we're going to ask a lot of expectations of our students and our teachers, those relationships really matter. And to see a teacher in a different light as well, to build a relationship, if you're going in to learn something about that academic area from that teacher, or if you're doing something totally different, and there, the teachers are able to share their other passions as well, outside of maybe teaching math or social studies or whatever. So I was really impressed with what's happening in Flex Time as well. And I've heard good things. And again, I'm only going off of my kids and their friends and community members. But I got to see some of the things that are happening at the high school last week, and that was, it was really positive.
It makes it so much easier for me to go to them when it is about that class. And just when the teacher is stressed, we're stressed, when the teacher isn't stressed, we're not as stressed. So it's like, we kind of feed off of each other's, I don't want to say vibe, but we feed off of each other's, you know, like attitude and how we're going about it. So that relationship between teachers and students is equally as important as it is with students and students.
Billy, go ahead.
So yeah, again, just a great overview from all of you. It's a great glimpse into everything that you're doing. Sorry to focus on Flex Time, but you know, in the past, you've been able to use Flex Time to take tests. Is that frustrating? That it's shorter now, so you can't?
I understand why it isn't like possible. So it might be a little frustrating to some students. I can understand how that would be frustrating. But I definitely think that teachers are still making an effort to give opportunities to take tests.
Like before or after school or something, sure.
Has like a system where it's like every Monday and every Wednesday, all retakes for all social studies teachers go to this classroom. And I've been able to utilize that for some of my classes. So I definitely think that teachers are making that effort to kind of make up for the lost time in Flex Time. Thank you for that.
I just have a, first of all, also, thank you all for your, for your presentation. Is the plan to go back to the full 40 minutes?
So we're actually one minute difference than we were two years ago during, you know, the last kind of regular year before March, but we, it was a 48 minute period, three days a week, or 40, it was 40, it was a 48, okay. And so, and then 25 minutes, five days a week. And I think what that consistency brings us to is, is different that you know that you have a set schedule. You don't have to worry if it's Monday or it's Wednesday, and where am I going to go? And I think the other component that's a lot different too is just the intentionality of our teachers to really make those connections with kids. And that each week when they And that each week when that Google form comes out and they can figure out what they're doing for that, you know, Monday through Friday schedule and students post it every day and students know. You know, and like, I mean, Tolu just talked about it, but that ability to build those connections and go to where you need to go or what you want to do for that day is I think really powerful for kids. Cause I don't know many high schools that have a program like that.
Follow up to this, Justin, um, do you see students attending the same thing for flex time? Sort of like, I mean, as a kid, I remember going to sit at the same lunch table all the time. And do they go to the same flex groups all the time or is, do they?
You know, I think humans are just creatures of habit, right? So, um, but I, I think with our younger students, our ninth and 10th graders, I think the, especially like week three and four, I think early on it was like that. And then you started to build in some of those interests. And you know, you talked about spike ball too. And, um, so when, you know, Mr. Huss came down and said, hey, we, you know, this is what kids wanted to do and they want me to, you know, what do you think? Yeah, absolutely. And so it's a time for them to get outside during that time. And um, you know, that's another piece, that connection which has been so powerful. Um, but really, I mean, I think that kids are finding like a menu of opportunities for them. And of course they're probably going with their two or three best friends. But they're still doing that piece together. They're still getting that time to socialize, but also it could be academically related. It doesn't have to be during that time.
One more thing, and this is for Jason. I wanted to say because my kids are in middle school, so I'm more in tune with what's happening there. I have really noticed the difference in the increase in opportunities and activities. So really want to commend you for that. As everyone pointed out, connections at school are vital and for mental health, but just for success. And especially after this past year. So wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Thank you. And it's been great teaming with, you know, Kate Anderson and Community Ed and Diana Wright, because that's been really important as well. Just another avenue for us to be able to create more offerings. And then sometimes it's just telling folks and teachers, just like when they say, what about this idea? Do, go for it. And, and because if there's kids that are interested in doing it, we should try to find a way to make it happen. So, yeah. But thanks.
Thank you. I want to make one last comment too. Um, you know, the work that you're all doing was identified in the strategic plan and then which is a community-based process, right? Our community came up and said, we're concerned about health and wellness and connectedness of our students. And so the work started. And then during COVID, we heard from our community again, very clearly that wellness was a huge concern. Um, and so I really appreciate all the work that's gone into the programs and the pieces and parts that you've put together that are age appropriate, um, and building appropriate. And are, you know, connecting kids between buildings and that consistency piece. Everything you, you shared with us tonight is fabulous. It's great. It's, it's sharing with us what we're doing. What I look forward to later in the year is hearing more about how it's impacted kids, right? It's too early right now to know. And I'm sure there'll be adjustments along the way. Flex time has been adjusted a number of different times for different reasons. And those adjustments will have to continue based on needs of kids, but I'm really excited to hear about impact data and information later in the year. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing this piece. So later in the year, we can think about and, and talk about those impacts. Thank you again for being here tonight. All right. Next we have our report from our representative.
Um, I will just preface and say there are a few repeats just because of how close the last meeting was. But to just start, uh, at Wildwood, there will be conferences this Thursday and Friday and no school on Friday. Um, and students in all grades, I think it was kind of talked about a little bit, but students in all grades will be having their welcome activities. So trying to work on how to become more welcoming to their fellow peers and their fellow students. But as I said, I think the principal kind of touched on that a little. Um, they're also celebrating veterans days by displaying pictures of their veterans on their veteran wall at the school. At OH Anderson, it is the book fair at November eleventh to November eighteenth. Uh, even though it's some NHS students are helping out with that. So like there's some connection there. Um, girl soccer champions, they got to walk through OH Anderson and kind of get some autographs and say hello. Um, if the students really like that, um, and we're able to just kind of interact. And again, conferences will be this Thursday and Friday and no school on Friday. Oh, also students will be able to play turkey bingo on Tuesday, November twenty third. Um, at the middle school conferences again this Thursday and Friday. Um, and the middle school is participating in treats for troops. So essentially they're bringing treats and they're going to send it over to troops stationed overseas. And then for the high school, I kind of wanted to go back to sports a little bit because again, we kind of wrapped up a few of our seasons and we've done so, so well. Um, to kind of go with the soccer, they're back to back to back to back champions. So four times in a row, they have been able to successfully claim that title. Boys got third in state, which is also a huge accomplishment. Uh, the football guys, they won their section final. So they're moving on to state, wish them the best of luck. Boys cross country ranked twelfth and girls cross country were ranked eleventh in state. So that's awesome as well. And again, finally conferences this Thursday and Friday, and there's no school on Friday.
Lots going on. And last time you mentioned too, the musical for the high school opens.
Oh, that's so true. November eighteenth.
Middle school production was fabulous. Barb and I had the opportunity to see the middle school production that last weekend, two weekends ago. Um, and so if you have an opportunity, board members to go see the high school show, it should be very good.
You'll have to check out some of the high school football haircuts that just arrived yesterday.
They bleached their hair too.
They did not. There's a number of styles you'll have to see for yourself. I was a little bit. I was a little amazed when one walked in my front door of what that looks like, but.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Tulip. And now superintendent's report.
Yes. Um, are you pulling this up for me, Patrick? Well, I will, I also have, uh, I have repeats, but I will work on that. Can you hear me? I said, that should work great. Okay. Let's see. Where should I be pointing? Oh, there we go. Okay. So overview, um, I'm going to give you some, uh, snapshots from around the district. You've seen quite a few already, but I'll, I'll show, share some pictures. Capital Projects Levy for technology, emergency protocols. You've got an email today. I just want to highlight that today. Again, we'll always do our COVID nineteen data and health and safety protocols. Talk a little bit about vaccine availability. You've gotten some information about that. And then just to follow up on the secondary schedule redesign as well. So some pictures from around the district, um, Tulu highlighted a number of these already in terms of how we've done and how we are continuing to do with our teams. You might not have heard that the adaptive soccer team won their game and now they are heading to state as well. So um, I don't have the information yet. I just learned that today. And so I don't know, um, when their first, uh, state game is. We also had our academic awards at the high school from last year for the class of twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Um, our students received awards already at school and then, um, an electronic um, program went home today to all the families. This side is music. We have a couple of honor bands that are off to, um, that have already participated actually in some, some honor bands that just happened. We also had the musician Peter Mayer who came um, as, uh, from the grant from the Wildwood Artis series that came to OH. Veterans Day is on the other side and you heard a little bit about the, um, veterans wall that happens at, uh, at Wildwood. I don't know if you've ever gotten to see it, but it's, it's, it's pretty special to have have the students identify family members that they connect with. And, um, who are veterans and they put that on the wall. It's, it's a pretty, I recommend seeing it if you can. And also our middle school students who did the treats for troops, two hundred twenty pounds. Their goal was fifty and they, they collected two hundred twenty. And thank you to the community for, for the Capital Projects Levy. It really is essential for teaching and learning. It's our ongoing funding technology. And so we're very thankful, um, that that passed recently. You received this today, I believe, uh, you, it's just some information about our emergency protocols. I recommend watching the video that came with that because it does highlight our communication around the five different, um, types of emergency responses we have. And the reason we've sent that out to families is so that when you, we communicate about an emergency that is happening in a building, we'll use this language and then you will know what it is that we're talking about. So I encourage you all to read that and, um, watch that video. This is in partnership with Washington County Sheriff's Office. So, uh, it's their goal to have all of our Washington County schools using the same language so that when they are supporting schools, we're all speaking the same language. And so this has been an effort, ongoing effort, um, within partnership with Washington County to, to get this going and to make sure that we're all using the same language. So that came out today. Um, okay. So, and we always do our COVID nineteen data review. Uh, again, Washington County transmission rate is high at this time and it's climbing. I don't know if you've read that recently that we have had a, a spike in cases. And so you can see right now we're at three hundred, I pulled this off the, um, site today. We are at three hundred eighty-two cases, um, per hundred thousand. Just to give you some understanding of how it compares the, to August, when we first started the school, when we first determined what our safety protocols, our mitigation measures would be. There's a comparison there. Um, we have, we have climbed quite a bit. But most recently we are experiencing a spike, the, um, that positivity rate is ten point three nine, which is really very high. So, um, this is, this is really very recent, uh, really truly in the past few days. I, I think we, I think I, I don't know, I think we had a conversation recently and we were talking about, you know, what's next? What would be the, the opportunities to look at, uh, lessening mitigation measures? And then suddenly we had the spike. So I'd want you to know um, that while we are having those conversations, it's right now is, um, a little concerning. You can see I have this on the top there. This is just off the Washington County websites, their, their COVID website. And if you look all the way over there at the, the, the numbers there, you see that one big spike. That's the October thirtieth, um, data dump that you may have read about in the paper where they, they started reporting the data a little differently. And so I would just encourage you to ignore that, that line there as part of the trend. I don't think, it doesn't represent the trend, but you can see, you can see that we have just had a pretty sharp rise just recently, very recently. So I, I, so what's the importance of monitoring Washington County transmission data? I've talked to you about this before. We do feel it in our schools when there is, when there is a jump in cases. And likewise, we feel it when there's a decrease. So we just, so we, we, if you had been watching our dashboard, you will have seen that our numbers have been, have been pretty good. I mean, we've had really low cases of their secondary in particular. And you'll see on Friday when it comes out that we have a little bit of, we have a jump. However, I will also say that, um, we, like, you know, for any kind of fear that's out there that we're talking, you know, that this, that this, um, increase in our transmission rate is going to change learning models or anything like that. That's just not the case. That's not how, we're, we're fine. Because we're staying, we're staying in school. Um, I know that last time we had a, a rise like this, it was, you know, a year ago, it was back in November, but we were in a very different situation there in terms of vaccination and, and such. So, um, I just would want to be clear about that. So our case rates have gone up this week. They are, but we are not seeing spread in schools. Um, it is the case that in a typical year, we, we face staffing stressors. It's just part of what happens. And certainly with COVID nineteen, we have additional stressors with that, whether it's a staff positive or quarantine, or if a staff is caring for positive or ill children. So we do, um, we have those. However, our limit layered mitigation is helping us limit that impact is the whole point of our layered mitigation strategy. So right now, um, we're okay, we've done some things with, with our substitutes to try and, um, have have more regular substitutes. We've, we've done a number of things working with our, um, teachers on call to make sure that we can cover absences. And so we're okay right now. I will say that that is, that is something that does affect our operations is staff absences as well. So that's something we have to keep an eye on. But we're okay right now. So that's my, that's a status update. I know that there are other districts that are struggling right now because of this recent spike. And we're, we're doing okay at this time. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? Oh, Kelly.
So, um, not expecting an answer to this right now, but it's something that I, I, I think I've asked you about this before as well, but, um, one of the things that I'm struggling an awful lot with, because I look at this just like, I mean, not, I'm sure not anywhere near as much as you do, but I look at it very regularly. And one of the things I'm struggling with is the communication from the nurses about when my kids have been in contact to somebody in a classroom or on a bus or wherever that communication is. Um, I feel like I'm getting that communication out of a five day school week, about three days of the week with my three kids in Mod Amedei School somewhere. And it says monitor for symptoms. And I sort of feel like, well, as a parent, I feel like that's my responsibility every day to monitor for symptoms and if they're sick to not send them into school, but I don't know what to do with that. Because when I get it, I, I don't know. You know, if we were unmasked, I know we've talked about that before. If you're unmasked, then we'd have to consider contact tracing, right? And because they're masked, that's why we're getting that sort of email. I don't know what to do with that at all. And I wonder what the time and resources that is to put that together to get that sent out to everyone because I don't, again, I wish I knew what to do with it. So.
Well, I, you know, I, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll try and think about that a little bit more too. I, it's, it's our attempt to keep you informed. And, and I haven't gotten it three times a week, I will say. So I'll, I'll say that you might want to consider keeping it up in symptoms because I, so I, I think it's just really our attempt to, to let you know that there's the chance that your child was in close contact. However, we've also posted for, posted a position for a contact tracing um, nurse again, so that we, we've talked about the idea of, of making them more targeted communications as well. Because I do understand that if you're, you're getting that, if the, the student was in your classroom right now, even if you weren't exactly a close contact. Yeah. And you would get fewer of them and you would know that you're truly a close contact if we had a contact. So we have, we have looked into that as well.
One follow up to that. Can I ask one more thing? And that would be, I know we had been, I've been watching this, had been trending a little bit. Um, well, our numbers had not maybe trending, had remained low for a couple of weeks at the high school. Yeah. And, and has that not changed? That you will have a higher number on Friday.
Friday. Yep.
Thank you, Barb. I just, I know every time you go through the data that you're looking at on a regular basis. And so I just want to read, I, I want to kind of go back at what you've said tonight, because we are seeing other districts that are talking about possibly going into remote learning. When we're looking at those, that's not our concern because of where we are. And our goal, as we've said on this board, is to remain in person because we know that's what's best for this district. So when you're talking about looking at those data points, it's all about trying to move toward removing
Mitigations. Yeah, mitigation.
The mitigations, addressing the mitigation. So it's not about moving toward going to remote learning. It's about, we're, the goal is always to stay in person and, and we're looking at the mitigation piece.
Right.
Yeah. Wanted to make sure that that was very clear because as we talk about data, it's, you know, with so many different things happening around us, I want to make sure that our goal remains the same.
Right. And, and each district as, you know, and I know families are frustrated by the fact that each district did do things differently. And and I will say that there are some districts that have struggled because of things they did differently. And there are some districts that are not, have, they've been successful or schools that have been successful in keeping kids in. And, um, and so it's difficult to compare because there are different responses. And there are different results to those responses. I will say that, uh, in consultation with public health, I was told that one thing that we could say is that districts that had universal masking had less of an impact on staffing. They, that was one thing that they could say. But that was the only one that I could, I could use across the board in terms of what was consistent. And that's our goal is really to keep our kids, is to keep our kids and staff safe in learning in person. I think we actually have just talked about this a little bit. Yeah. Sorry, I'm just gonna, and in the interest of not reading everything to you, I'll just keep, keep going. But I will say I, I had my conversation again, uh, with, I, as you know, I've talked to our county, our public health once and, and I've told you before, I think that Washington County Public Health tries to help me use a number of layers to, to determine what would, what would be an opportunity to remove mitigation strategies. And he was very, very clear today that the spike is concerning and this is not the time. So, um, he's not always that direct with me, but he was today. So I'll tell you that. A vaccine availability. Uh, we have put out information to let people know about the opportunities in Washington County and will continue to share that information. about the opportunities in Washington County, and we'll continue to share that information about vaccine availability for ages five through eleven. Secondary schedule redesign, families will have gotten and students and staff have gotten surveys that have gone out regarding their experience with the secondary schedule to try and get some feedback. The design team has met a couple of times now, and they will be taking they meet again in December. They will take these results, look at them as part of their complete look at at data to determine to start working on secondary schedules proposals that will come out to the board at the end of in the spring, but will go out for a couple of feedback sessions to families and staff and students in February and March. There'll be a couple of different feedback opportunities there. We did create, we have that video, and you can watch that as that that you had requested some kind of introduction to really help people understand what it is we're after. So Alice Suyford put that together for us to give the overview as well.
I wanted to say thank you. I saw at the end of the survey, you did put a place for families to express interest in being engaged. And so I appreciate you making that opportunity available for them. And also, I thought the video did a nice job of explaining what is being considered.
So that's my update.
Number of discussion items tonight, starting with the board member calendar. The calendar is in board. I would like to call out two things before the people start. We have a PTO meeting on November seventeenth at seven PM, and I was wondering if there's a board member who'd be able to attend that.
November seventeenth at seven PM. If you're able to, if something just shoot me an email maybe, and then
I don't hear from someone next couple of days. I'll just let the PTO know that we can't send someone this month. The other thing I want to call out was the AMSD conference is also that same day, the seventeenth, all day during the day. I think a number of us are attending, which will be a great experience. So.
I'll I'll do the PTO meeting.
Our calendar might just be off, and we only need to attend one.
Exactly.
Right.
Only affects you and I, and so we've those are not correct.
Okay. Okay. I think I schedule on my calendar by the email. So but I'll double check. Thank you. Other things people like to call out. Great. Next on the agenda, we have the school board organizational meeting information in your board packet is the schedule of board committees, which are in policy. And then a number of other groups like the PTO, AMSD, et cetera, that we attend. And so in December, we have that organizational meeting where we talk through what each person is interested in doing that will include the election of officers for the board for the next year as well. And so please take a look at that and and review that. And I will be meeting with our new board member to review that with him as well prior to the meeting. But if you'll come with some ideas, our policy does say very clearly that we work to consensus. It's not a chair appointment of committees and appointments. It is a consensus activity we do together. So we'll do that in December. So take a look at that before then. So next we have the second reading of policies.
Yes, and I have not received any feedback on any of the changes that these all went, just as a reminder, these all went policy committee for updates. And after that, we've come through with one reading. And I have not heard anything from anyone regarding these policies, if there are any other changes. So these are the same as they were at our last meeting. And so unless you have questions, I'll just leave them here. And next meeting, then I would be looking for approval.
Onto action items. Next, we have the approval of donations and grants. That will happen for October, November at the December meeting. So there won't actually be an action item tonight for that item. The next item is the approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three financial timeline. I like to make a motion to table that until December. So we can have Jeff present and and give that presentation. I'm looking for a second to that motion. Thank you, Kevin, for the second. So we have a motion to table by Lucy and a second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. So we'll have that presentation next month.
If everyone's comfortable with going ahead with the joint powers agreement. If you don't, if you have specific questions, then I I'll recommend waiting on it until December, and that would be fine, because then Jeff will be here. Jeff has been involved with the joint powers agreement with a different intermediate school district. So he has a lot of detail on on the history of a number of these rewritings and and how and modernizing, I guess, the joint powers agreement. But in our case, this nine sixteen JPA was written back in nineteen sixty-nine and needed to be modernized. And so we've seen it before, but the the first version that we were going to look at a number of districts asked us to hold off on because it was it was pretty cumbersome. And there were some, I think there were some holes in the way the calculations were being made. And it was a pretty cumbersome process. And so they've rewritten it. And this one is is a lot more streamlined. It's a lot clearer. And all of the business managers for all of the districts have looked it over and have a are recommending that it move forward as well. And so I you have in your packet some more detail about it, some some background. And Kevin, I don't know if you have other things that you want to add as well. But otherwise, I'm asking for approval on this.
What brought us forward forward was when St. Francis decided they were gonna leave. And so it would have been, I think, prudent.
Move to approve. Powers agreement, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of resolutions canvassing returns of votes for the school district special election authorizing issue issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election duties. That's a very long action item. So these are the election results that we must canvas this evening. And the resolution is in your packet. Looking for a motion. Thank you, Tony. Moved by Tony, second by Stacy to canvas the election. Any discussion?
This pretty much just means that I'm signing off, that it's all authentic. Signing all the documents.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now we'll do the similar resolution canvassing the returns for the special election for renewal of the capital's project levy. So moved. By Julie, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the tech levy? I want to take the opportunity to thank our community again for their vote of support for the work that we're doing in the technology. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. You're moving through these.
Could we just specify if everyone so everyone understands with letter, what we just talked about is approved canvassing the election. And so now Paul Donna is going to be on our board, starting in seven days. He officially is how it works, just so everyone's aware. So in seven days, it's that's the what how long we have to wait after canvassing. And then he'll be part of our board. And then on December tenth, is that the next meeting? Ninth, December ninth, we will, he will join our board meeting as and will will do the the oath of office at that point. So that's how how that works. But he will be part of the board prior to that meeting. So I just thought I specified that.
Thank you for sharing the time.
Approval of policies. So these are the annual policies that had no changes.
Right. So sorry. So with these, I'm asking for approval again. These were ones that had no changes. We just are doing these two. We just have them here twice because they don't have changes. We're asking for approval today.
Thank you, Tony.
Move by Tony, second by Kelly. Any discussion on the policies that have no changes? All those in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Lot of items here. Last action item tonight is election of a school board treasurer. Tony has been our treasurer this year. Tony, thank you for your work there. And as of November seventeenth, we will need a new treasurer. So I would like to nominate Kevin Donovan to be our treasurer until our organizational meeting in January. Kevin has been treasurer for us before and currently isn't serving in another officer position, because Stacy has also been our treasurer. And so I'd like to nominate Kevin and looking for a second for the nomination.
Second.
I mean, second.
I said second. I said second, too. Second, second.
I made the motion. Sorry. We're all very excited. Kevin's gonna be treasurer. So we have a nominee, a motion in the second. Are there any other nominees? All right, all those in favor of the nomination of Kevin Donovan for treasurer, starting November seventeenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, on to school board committee reports. Tony, do you have a report from AMSD?
I do. At a meeting on November fifth, we had a presentation by Dr. Todd Beach, who is a member of the social studies standards review committee. He is a social studies teacher in the Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Schools. Gave an excellent presentation on the work of that standards, talking about how standards work and going through a whole bunch of different processes. He has his slide deck up and available on the website. If you want to scroll through it, quite informative, and he is a wonderful speaker. And I think actually a great teacher, because a lot of us wanted to take a class with him at the end of this. Paula Forbes, who many of you might have heard speak before. And if you haven't had a chance to listen to any presentations with her, highly recommend if she is a speaker to go attend. She's done a lot of work with Reimagine Minnesota and for AMSD. And so she was presented with the two thousand twenty-one Friends of Public Education Award, very well deserved. The MSD had a clean audit that they got to report back. And then in terms of action items, they did approve position papers on compensatory revenue, early childhood education, English learner funding, special education, tier to teacher licensers. And they have a draft of the legislative platform. These things have to be updated every year. It's similar language that they've had, but it's updated to whatever the current changes happened in the last session to kind of update and keep those things moving forward. So if you're looking at what they're planning to do from a legislative standpoint, those are good documents for everyone to review. And then they also had a discussion about updating the strategic plan. And that was about it. Did I miss anything?
No, that was very comprehensive.
Thank you, Tony. For the MAF report, there's not been a MAF meeting since our last board meeting. The next meeting of MAF is Monday night, and I will be attending on behalf of the board. Next is AMSD, or I'm sorry, MSBA, another set of letters. And I'll do that report as well. As we mentioned earlier, the delegate assembly is coming up. The pre meetings are next week, which Kevin and I will attend. Saint Anthony New Brighton did sign on to our resolution at the last moment, and so it did make it into the delegate assembly book that Kevin and I are reading currently. And our other resolution in the delegate assembly book received, let's say, no recommendation. They didn't recommend opposition or passage in in terms
They didn't know what to do with it.
So then Kevin and I will attend the delegate assembly on December third and fourth and can report back after that. I will also add that the MSBA leadership conference is coming up in January, and I believe Leslie is getting us registered to serve for that. I will be involved with two different sessions during that time. They've asked Pelsby to come give a session, and being a Pelsby member and a board member, I will be at that session. And then I also have a session I'll be giving with the Leading for the Futures cohort at that meeting as well with Dr. Uher Williams from the Racial Justice Initiative and Knowledge Works will be with us as well, as well as Nicole Hayes from the NOKA Hennepin Board. So I'm nine sixteen board.
Leslie sent around some pictures for me last week of the mobile unit. And we had talked that we had heard about this last year. There's a struggle for all the kids, but I mean, especially still for some of these special ed students. And so they devised, made this trailer that they could tow around and go to homes of students and have have classroom experience in this mobile unit. And so the the there's a touchscreen, a big television touchscreen with special lighting that is sensitive to people. And the sensorial, the the touch, the tactile pieces of this are suitable for all learners. And it's just a it's a neat thing. It has wheelchair access, the slide clips down and and all students, again, can gain access to this thing. So it's pretty cool. And they were going to, I don't know what the status is, apply for a MAGA Magna award through the National School Board Association for innovation. We'll see where that goes. And I guess bigger picture, we'll see if there's a National School Board Association conference. The nine sixteen board or district sends two school board members to the conference for NSBA. It's not our ROTA. And so I will go on that. There'll be a couple of people again, if there is one that will go. But every so often, we get a chance as our district to go through nine sixteen. What else? We about Valerie Bo, our new superintendent, working with her for a mid-year evaluation. And so looking at a couple of instruments that could potentially help us evaluate her performance. And that's nine sixteen.
Thank you. Are there other board or committee reports? As Tulu said, it's been a short time since our last meeting, so between meetings. Very none. I want to take this moment to thank Tony Vasuni for his service on the board this past year. Thank you for being willing to step up when we had an open seat and take the appointment when we were in the need of having a community member be on this board. I appreciate your service and your time. Thank you very much.
And I just want to take a moment to thank the community for letting me serve this past year. I look forward to seeing how you guys continue moving on with their strategic plan and working so all our students can continue to achieve. So thank you.
See no other items on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.